For Monday, October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Our invocation this evening is going to be offered by Lupe Moye, Independence State Public Affairs, LDS Church. If you would please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful to thee for this beautiful day. We thank thee for all that we have and the opportunity that we have to live here in this beautiful city of Independence. And we are thankful for our protection. We realize so many natural disasters all over the world and we are grateful to be safe here in our city. We're thankful for freedom and for the opportunity that we have to have so many things, to be so overly blessed. And at this time, we ask thee to the Spirit be with us, that we'll be able to discuss things that are important to our city and that our council and our mayor and all the city staff will be able to make good, wise choices on the behalf of the members of our city. And we ask thee to bless everyone that lives here, that they will be, live in harmony, no matter the wickedness that we live in, in these days. And we're grateful for all that we have and for the blessings of goodness and mercy and love. And we ask thee these things humbly, in name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Say, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Dougherty?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Van Camp?
Here.
Mayor Weir?
Here. This takes us to our consent agenda.
Is that me?
Yes, that's you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought we were due. Mayor Weir?
Yes, council-
I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Other, yes, Councilman Dougherty, have something pulled?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, would you pull out eighteen eight oh two for separate consideration?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other items any council member wishes pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember DeLucy?
Eighteen eight oh one, eighteen eight hundred, eighteen seven ninety-nine.
Wait a minute, eighteen oh one?
Eight hundred and seven ninety-nine.
Okay. Any other council members who'd like to push this for separate consideration? Yes, Councilman Robertson?
Eighteen seven ninety-eight.
Okay. Okay, and the others? Okay, Madam Say, clerk, will you please call the roll? Minus resolutions eighteen eight oh two, eighteen eight oh one, eighteen eight hundred, eighteen seven ninety-nine, eighteen seven ninety-eight.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Councilmember Dougherty, eighteen eight oh two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the Downtown redevelopment coordinating committee. I was asked to be on that and was the chair of that committee. We picked a real diverse group of citizens throughout the entire city that met. We went to Alatha, Lenexa, Gladstone. What did other cities do that things worked? What did the citizens get behind? How well it worked? We found that we had probably sixteen, seventeen sets of plans throughout the years that we had paid for and never acted on. How could we put all these plans together? How could we tie this together? The downtown is, and what is the center, it's really not the downtown, but the center core of Independence is really the heartbeat and the lifeblood of the entire town. Without that, nothing else will thrive. What can we do to look to the future? Where would this city be in twenty years and what would be some of the things you'd like to see? And it was really neat to find out what the committee liked, what the committee didn't like, what they thought they'd like to see, how fast they'd like to see it, how they want them implemented. So, we had a real great, I say a great time kicking around these ideas, looking at what other cities did, talking about what's important to the community, what's important to the citizens. And it was very diverse, from police officers, there was a police officer in another city that lived in Independence, to school teachers, to business owners, to just everyday citizens. So, we really had a cross-section, and that was really unique. So, we did come up with some ideas, and if you want to dream big and you want to see the city move forward, these are some things that could be done. Our next step is to have a committee to see how they could be paid for, how we would finance them, how we'd move them forward. But as we parted as our last meeting, everybody said, "We hope that something gets done. We hope that this is not the seventeenth plan that we put on the shelf and mothball, that we actually see some of these big ideas wake up, get us out of the nineteen seventies, and move us forward." So, it was really a great committee and they did a great job. And a lot of them said, "Man, I just can't wait to be back on there for the second phase, the second half," and to help guide the future of the city. So, I move for the approval of eighteen eight oh two.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember DeLucy?
I would ask the city manager, what does it mean that we're making a resolution accepting the recommendations of the committee and intention to explore project initiatives? I don't understand what our resolution means.
Sure. So, as Councilmember Dougherty kind of alluded to, there, the work of the committee is really taking over four hundred individual projects over these sixteen different plans and really identifying three target areas. There's nine different initiatives, I would call them, but not necessarily specific projects per se that we're traditionally accustomed to seeing. So, what the council would be voting on tonight is really honing in on those key core focus areas. And then the work of the city staff and council may consider additional committee work there for, forward, is over the next, I would say, ten to twenty years. How do we begin to fund these? How do we begin to finance these? What are the different mechanisms? The, the committee is making a very strong effort to suggest some ways to fund those, but those aren't necessarily binding or bound to this council or any future councils moving forward. This is more saying a statement of, these are important projects, these are important focus areas, and these are where we're going to put our energy and resources over the next ten to twenty years.
And last week, when we were presented with this report, I asked for an inventory of the existing buildings the city owns, and existing parks the city owns. I asked for a listing, an inventory of all the various economic incentives we've given throughout the city, and I've not received any of that. Is any of that done?
The surplus property report is something that we have online. The economic incentive report you asked for is something that our financial advisor, Springstead, with our new Director of Finance and Administration, is continuing to work on pulling together. I know the council has been provided with some of that information previously, but we're trying to make sure that information is as up-to-date and accurate as possible. So, that portion of that workload isn't completed.
What about the parks?
That would be part of that, yes, we, we have that information, correct.
Okay. And so, if a project is not in this report, for example, Crisp Lake Cleanup, what if any effect does it have? Because it's not on this report and something else is on this report.
I, I don't think the report should be seen as binding necessarily. The report should be seen as giving clarity of purpose and focus to this council and future councils and future city staff moving forward. But, you know, if there were opportunities for cleanups or opportunities for improvements or grant matching funds, this should not be in any way restrictive to those initiatives or efforts moving forward, either in the present or the future tense.
And is the Twenty-Four Highway flooding area part of this report?
It is in the sense of the Fairmont Plan, which is one of the focus areas that I was mentioning to you in there. I don't know that it specifically focuses on how to address the flooding issue that you're referencing, but that corridor is part of the focus of this plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Councilmember Dougherty as well as everyone on the committee that has put so much time and effort into this planning and wondered if I could just take, indulge the council and recognize any members of the committee that might be here tonight.
Stand?
Stand. Yeah, stand for me, yeah. Thank you, thank you all very much for all the time and effort that you have invested. I think we have wonderful plans for the future for Independence. It is going to cost the city and the citizens some money if we implement some of these, and I think it's important for us as a council to evaluate that in the, the days and years ahead, because not all of this will be able to be implemented right away. But it gives us a good roadmap, gives us something to look at for the future. I guess my only immediate concern is that we have a number of needs as well as now these wants. And so, to me and my values, I think we need to put and have to put the needs of the city first, which include a lot of the things with capacity for IPL, AMI, the future of several of the things that we've talked about as a city council. And so, there's, there's a number of things, especially with IPL, that may require us to bond, to, to sell bonds as a city. And right now, some of the major things in this study will require bonds as well. And so, I don't think we should put that ahead of the needs of the city, especially with IPL and the, and the fact that we may need to sell bonds in order to continue the, the Independence Power and Light Department and the generation capacity for the city. So, that's my only caveat, but thank you again to the committee and thank you, Councilmember Dougherty.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to thank the committee for all their hard work that you guys did for the past year at CFS, for, for sitting, listening, and trying to take the information that we have and assimilate it into the package that you gave us last week at the study session, which was really great. I hear the words "wants" and "needs." A lot of this information is what we need to revitalize the west side of town. For the last decade, there has been very little of, of concrete transformational work that has been done. There's been good social work that has been done in the first district, the west side of town. There hasn't been any very strong, concrete movement forward in how we can take back our neighborhoods, how we can take back our art district, how we can take back our Fairmont district. So, this is a good step in the right direction to move forward. It's not a want, it's a need, what we need to do. Otherwise, we're going to sit here, or the next council's going to sit here ten years from now and be scratching their head about what took place ten years prior. We're not going to let the grass grow on our feet. Next week, we have a Twenty-Four Highway CID informational meeting to pull together some of the stakeholders, to take a look, to see what some of the next steps could be to implement the Fairmont side of this plan. So, we're moving forward, I'm excited about it, and I want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Anything else? We had an excellent report last week, and I appreciate all the effort that went into that, certainly by our consultants who did a wonderful job of articulating the work of this committee. And I think it was very well said last week during that presentation, that this is really bringing all the needs of the community. And this certainly, as you can tell from the, the committee that was selected to work on this, this isn't just about Western Independence. This is, isn't just about the first district, or the square, Englewood, or Fairmont. This is about our, our city and the future of our city. And many of these needs are going to be taken care of regardless. They're, they're baked into our comprehensive, our comprehensive development plan, into our capital improvements plan. And I think one of the probably best decisions that was made in this process was going ahead and doing the public engagement. And there were a number of public engagement opportunities that took place and had an opportunity to really get feedback, not just from the committee, but from the community. And I think what was most reassuring about that was, this isn't some planting, anything else that we know that we need to do. We have a, you know, we have a, a lot of needs in our community, a lot of priorities, and as I like to say, we don't start at the top of the list and work our way down until we get to the bottom of the list. All of these things need to be working together, and a lot of planning has been done that we're going to continue to pursue, the Fairmont Plan. The Twenty-Four Highway CID, the Englewood Arts District still has plans going on, and this isn't competing with, with those. There's certainly energy needs, there's infrastructure needs, and none of these things are in competition with each other. But this gives us a clear pathway for this community, because this council is going to change. Our city staffing is going to change, but what's not going to change is the community. And this is what the community has asked to have prioritized by this council and by future councils. So, with that, Madam Say, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Stain.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Resolution passes. Okay. Councilmember DeLucy, eighteen eight zero one.
Mr. City Manager, I wonder if you, if you could let the community know what this proposal is?
Sure, I'd be happy to. As many are probably aware, the National Park Service makes use of the city's old fire station one at two-two-three North Main Street. That is where a visitor to the city would go to purchase a ticket if they'd like to tour the Truman Home. As I mentioned, that is a city-owned facility, but the building has about four hundred thousand dollars worth of deferred maintenance needs that need to be addressed, on top of some limitations with space and ADA accessibility and some other restrictions that have really rendered that building challenged in a lot of ways. So, the National Park Service has been looking for quite some time now about whether renovating that facility makes sense for them, or whether relocating to a different property makes sense. I will point out that federal guidelines do allow a park service to locate within up to five miles of a site, so that could mean that the park service could have moved as far away as Forty and Nolan. However, they've been looking to stay in close proximity, because it makes sense for them, given the location of the Truman Home. They've looked at a number of sites. Many may recall some publication around looking at the Higher Ground Hotel adjacent to the Truman Home. Ultimately, though, what the park service is looking to do is make a significant investment, both in their own facility and in the community. So, they've been discussing making anywhere from an eight to ten million dollar investment in a new facility here on the Independence Square. The city owns just over one acre, as we sit here, just to the north of us, across Truman Road. We have met with staff from the National Park Service, the Regional Park Director for the Midwest Region has been here two different times, has visited with us several times by phone. There is strong interest in that. Part of the arrangement that they would propose to us, though, and there are still steps that would need to transpire, Congress would need to literally pass an act to get the, the district boundaries redrawn, to pick up this acre that I'm mentioning to you, but we would need to consider conveying that land to them to help facilitate the transaction. So, what is on the agenda for the council's consideration tonight is a resolution of support, expressing the city's desire to see this investment made and expressing the council's acceptance of conveying that land. It does not bind the council, that would still require action down the road, but this is a resolution of support that could be used to help further this project down the road, as Congress takes action in redrawing those boundaries and, as I said, make this project accelerate to the next level.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of resolution eighteen eight oh one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Resolution passes. Councilmember DeLucy, eighteen eight zero zero.
Oh, Mr. City Manager, could you explain this one to me also?
Yes. Our Community Development Department has been working with the Mid-America Regional Council for quite some time, working towards achieving this status, which really is a big honor for our city. So, I will ask Director Tom Skinnell of Community Development to come up and share a little bit more about this.
Yes, so, the Community for All Ages is an initiative that is offered through the Mid-America Regional Council. And one of the things that it is looking at is, you know, as a, as a society, we are getting older, the percentage of population that's over sixty-five keeps, keeps going up, people are living longer. And what this program intends to, to do is recognize communities who have taken steps to be more welcoming to residents of all ages. And in the process, communities that are more, more vibrant, healthy, and, and prosperous. So, Mid-America Regional Council put together this, this program, and they have three different levels, bronze, silver, and gold. Back in two thousand and sixteen, we applied for the bronze level, which is the awareness. So, we had staff from Mid-America Regional Council come out, talk to the planning commission and other staff, and educate them about the Community for All Ages program, the benefits of, of that. After that occurred, we applied for that level of status. This year, we wanted to expand that beyond the, the bronze level. And so, we started to do the silver level, which is the assessment level, that we used the staff from Mid-America Regional Council, and we had a more in-depth, engaging discussion with the planning commission about the program and, and steps that we can take to be a, a community for all, all ages. That process has concluded, and we also tackled the third level, which is the gold, which is the implementation. You will recall that over the last year, we have adopted the new comprehensive plan, and that, together with the Independence for All Strategic Plan, outlines our community being a community for all ages. With all of those tasks that we have, have taken, we have qualified to apply for both the silver and gold level applications to the Mid-America Regional Council. And if the council passes this resolution tonight, staff will work on that and get that application submitted to mark by their November first deadline.
And what, I'm, I'm just- I'm just curious, Tom, what do we get for it? Like, are we available for more funding or programs?
It's really a recognition program. It does allow you, it, it does say that we are a community for all ages. We are welcoming in everything that, that we do, from our, our programming of, of parks to our, the way that we reconstruct sidewalks or build new sidewalks, that we are looking through the, the Community for All Ages lens.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move approval of eighteen eight hundred.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Resolution passes. Councilmember DeLucy, eighteen seven ninety-nine.
Again, I just don't understand what this is about, so I wondered if you could explain it to us.
Yes, certainly. I'll spare you the speech I give every year at Budget about the changing nature of local government and the resource challenges that we continue to face as a municipality. But I will tell you that as I continue to meet with my peers in local government, particularly those here in eastern Jackson County, we're all facing the same issues. We're facing increasing expectations of the services we should provide, but diminishing resources within which to do those. So, rather than, you know, just sit around with our heads in our hands about that, we've been talking, my colleagues and I, about ways in which we could try to collaborate and address some of these challenges that we're all facing. So, most recently, in conjunction with the cities of Blue Springs and Lee Summit, we've been working through the Mid-America Regional Council to participate in what we're calling a shared services program. And we've really tried to identify five initial areas that we believe our cities are ripe to collaborate on. The idea here is not only, you know, trying to, you know, maximize the resources and/or save money, but really enhance our service delivery, to find greater efficiencies, to really accelerate the quality and, and level of services that we're providing to our citizenry. What this resolution is tonight for the council, Councilman DeLucy, is really expressing the council's desire for us as administrators and staff to continue to work towards this, to continue to partner with the Mid-America Regional Council to find ways for us to collaborate on these issues. It, it's not adopting anything other than a resolution of intent for us to continue to work on that.
Thank you.
I would add, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Walker isn't going to take credit for this, so I'm going to give him the credit. We, we're very fortunate in our city to have the next generation of city leadership in individuals like Zach Walker and Lauren Palmer and Kristen Ayers and, and some of our other city management staff. This is the generation of municipal leadership that's really going to have to navigate the, the changes that we are experiencing, and there really is, is not a model. The old way of, of managing a city, or a county, or a school district is radically changing. So, I want to give credit where the credit is due and say that Mr. Walker brought this idea forward to his colleagues and initiated this with the Mid-America Regional Council. And we're, if this resolution passes this evening, this will be a pilot program with our surrounding cities in eastern Jackson County to try to see what shared services we can find efficiencies with. Now, we're not talking about sharing police officers or sharing fire departments, we're talking more about, the discussion has been back-office operations, purchasing accounting, I mean, some of those functions that we all pay for separately, and maybe some efficiencies could be found. So, I am pleased that the city managers and mayors in our surrounding cities have also stepped forward to, to bring some thought to some potential opportunities here. And if this is, if we show some success, this is potentially a program that could reach out to include other cities around our region. And I think ultimately, it saves our taxpayers' money and it makes our government more efficient. So, thank you for leading this effort.
Thank you.
Are there any other, oh, I guess we need a motion. I'm sorry.
I move approval of eighteen seven ninety-nine.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Okay, Councilman Robertson, oh, I'm sorry, resolution passes. Councilman Robertson, eighteen seven ninety-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this, mainly to point out to the council as well as the rest of the citizens, that this represents new housing, and there, there is a number of new house, housing starts in Independence. In fact, we've, I think, had more this year than we've had in a long time. But this is in my district and the third district, and I am supportive of this resolution that would be another plat in Stone Canyon, and it would, I think, give us another, I believe it's eight or nine houses. It does, this is a preliminary plat, so we, we haven't seen the final one yet, and we will later on. But this does provide that there is a second entrance for fire. And as you have heard me before, I'm always in favor of at least two entrances for most housing subdivisions, and we've got a number that don't have that in Independence now. But I am in favor of two, two roads in, or at least a road in, road out type of scenario for most neighborhoods. So, I am pleased, we are, I think, a city that needs more executive housing. We have limited amounts of executive housing for executives to move into in Independence, and so, this is a good start. And I hope that we see more out toward Harmony in the Valley and, and some of the other new housing subdivisions along Jackson Drive and Little Blue Parkway. So, I, Mayor, I move bill number eighteen seven nine eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vancamp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Resolution passes. This takes us to our second readings. Madam City Clerk?
These next three bills will receive a second reading and be considered by the council. Bill number eighteen dash zero nine one, an ordinance amending the zoning district map as to attractive ground located at one nine seven zero zero East Thirty-Ninth Place South from District R six, single-family residential, to District R thirty, PUD, high-density residential planned unit development, and approving a preliminary development plan in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to dig it up here out of my packet, just one moment, please. Given the range that we had here, and knowing that a portion of this may be in the five-hundred-year floodplain, Mr. City Manager, what, if anything, is the developer wanting to do to help mitigate any type of damage to their facility there, within that five-hundred-year floodplain?
Sure. Councilor, I think I would ask developers' representation, Bill Moore, to come forward and just address that for the council's benefit.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Bill Moore. Actually, I think what I'd like to do is defer this question to Representative of Spanos Corporation, who is probably better equipped to respond to the question about that issue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peter Rossick.
Good evening, council. The question came up on the flood. This project is currently engineered and drawn out of the floodplain. The floodplain is an elevation established by the Corps of Engineers. We had it engineered above and out of it. We do not develop any projects in any floodplain anywhere. We can't insure it, we certainly can't live with it. Been with this company twenty-two years, I've never done one that's even close. I have another lady that's sitting right over there, been with the company forty years, we've never built one in a floodplain. So, it is a number that is established, it's not established by us, it's not, it's written in stone, and we're out of it. That's what's reflected on our drawings, that we've completed, and if the project goes through, that's what will be on our drawings when we submit to the city. You have any further questions?
No, that answers that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Roberson?
I just wanted to say, although I would probably be in favor of this project, I am going to recuse myself again. I did two weeks ago, because of my membership in the Community of Christ Church. I have not received a answer from the Ethics Commission from two weeks ago. And so, I wanted an update, updated ruling from the Ethics Commission, even though I was told that they ruled on this thirty years ago. And so, I'm waiting for that, and I'm sorry, but I will abstain.
I alluded last week when we brought this up, that there was some, that I had received some new information that I thought was important to reconsideration of this. And it does have to do with the ownership of the property, and I was remiss in maybe not understanding the ownership of the property. So, Mr. City Manager, I would ask if we could have a representative come forward and maybe give some clarity as to the ownership of this property.
Please, I would encourage that. I believe Steve Graffio from the Community of Christ Church is here and could clarify ownership information, sorry.
Hello?
Steve Graffio, member of the Presiding Bishop for the Community of Christ. This land, some sixty acres, is owned by the Reorganized Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, appointee employee pension trust fund. And so, it is a separate organization from the Community of Christ, it's part of the pension trust.
Okay, so, what I presume that means is employees and retirees from the, from-
Would be the beneficiaries of that.
Our LDS churches, that's, so it doesn't, and Councilman, I respect your position, but it doesn't affect church members, but church employees?
Church employees trust fund, so they would be the beneficiaries of that fund.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilman?
This is directed to Mr. Walker. On the, out there on the infrastructure, out there, has anybody looked into the sanitary sewer, whether it's big enough to, for this high-density? And the power and light deal, when they built that years and years ago, they put in four-inch conduit, and they maximize that conduit size. And we always said down there, if they ever had to increase the size of amperage out there, we'd be in trouble, because we'd have to dig it up, all that conduit up, from the substation, all the way down.
Yeah, Councilman, I may ask Tom Skinnell to come forward, because typically, you know, when the developer comes in to actually start pulling permits and stuff, is when we do the pre-development plan to look at exactly what you're talking about, the infrastructure. And I just want to clarify with him quickly if they've had the opportunity to look at that yet. That may not be quite to that step in the process yet, but I'll ask Tom to weigh in.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, we've not gotten to that point yet, because this is just a rezoning and a preliminary development plan, so they haven't gotten to that phase yet where they're doing construction documents. But from the pre-review stage, there were no comments from either WPC staff or IPL staff about any issue that they saw, just in reviewing the plans that they had.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilman Vancamp?
In light of the majority vote of the council to award Spanos Corporation the bond issue requested to allow them to build the Thirty-Ninth Place apartment project, I decided to reconsider and reevaluate the proposal. I do not feel it is right to approve the money for such a project, and then to defeat that purpose by denying the zoning that the project requires. Spanos Corporation representatives were kind enough to meet with me and discuss their goals. I also talked individually with my fellow council members, as well as constituents. After reviewing the quality development that Spanos Corporation is known for, and the questions and concerns of the citizens who took the time to talk with me, I've concluded that this project is very much in the best interest of our city. I am therefore voting for the proposed zoning change.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I voted for this originally in the first time, and it is true, we, was pointed about, Councilmember, we have a certain amount of rental in the city, it seems to be heavy. A lot of that came down during the real estate meltdown, where speculators bought the homes that were foreclosed on, and some of this massive amount of rental is not necessarily good quality rental. And we could lose some of that, wouldn't hurt us at all. One of the things we haven't been able to track is young professionals that demand a high-end apartment in an area such as where these will be. And we want those people to come here, they bring good incomes, they come here, and we want them to find independence, discover independence, and then stay here. When they buy their ranch-style home and start their family, I want it to be here. And we'll never get them to come here to, if they've never been here originally. So, by getting these apartments, and getting the young professionals, the kind of people that we want in the city, to come here, stay in these apartments, and hopefully build a home here, buy a home here, it's a plus for the whole city.
Thank you.
And this goes hand in hand with the plat that you want, and in favor of bringing the young professional, and having an upper-scale place, and then when they're here, and they can see those houses and settle here. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
No.
Perkins?
Yes. Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
No.
Roberson?
Abstain.
Vancamp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes, ordinance passes.
Bill number eighteen dash zero nine three, an ordinance accepting a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency for the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program, and estimating revenue and increasing appropriations in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents in the grants fund. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vancamp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes, ordinance passes.
Bill number eighteen dash zero nine four, an ordinance authorizing the removal and destruction of municipal court records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such destruction, and are subject of the Circuit Court Administrative Order Number two thousand eighteen dash two one zero. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vancamp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes, ordinance passes. Takes us to our first readings.
The next two bills will receive their first reading and second reading on the next council meeting on November fifth. Bill number eighteen dash zero nine five, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen, of the Independent City Code, which will add short-term rental regulations. Bill number eighteen dash zero nine six, an ordinance authorizing execution of municipal and cost apportionment agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the U.S. Twenty-four Highway Bridge Replacement Public Improvements Project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where's the money going to come from for our one-third share, Mr. City Manager?
The initial fifty thousand dollars that's here in the first reading would be the street sales tax, and it's anticipated that the street sales tax would continue to support that one-third cost when that comes down. Just want to point out, we don't know what that exact amount will be yet. We anticipate it could be as much as one-point-three million, but I think that's on the high end. But to answer your question directly, the street sales tax fund.
And do we have a timeline on when all this work would be done on the bridge?
The goal is to have that done to coordinate with the library's renovation in advance of the seventy-fifth anniversary of Truman's ascension to the presidency, which I believe is in the next two years?
April twenty twenty.
Right, correct.
Okay, so we're looking at about two years to come up with the one-point-three. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, this takes us to citizens' requests. Lucy Young requests to speak to the council regarding the rezoning of the RLDS-owned property where Spanos received the thirty-seven million-dollar industrial bond. Mrs. Young, have you been notified of the council rules of procedure?
Yes.
The city clerk will keep the time.
Thank you. And to answer your question, Councilmember, about the flood, what they're doing with the flood concerns, actually, they're using pilot, a program of one-time payment, is what Mr. Bill Moore had said at the planning and zoning meeting, where they're going to take all of this hard surface and dump it straight into the Little Blue, which is only going to increase the amount of flooding, if not in this town, further down the road. And I sent you the pictures of the businesses right there at nineteen seven hundred South Jackson that had flooded, and they are still empty today. I sent you the pictures from the U.S. Geological Survey, and it showed exactly what the layout was. I didn't position the buildings in the correct spot. I'm not going to pretend to be in that type of line of work. But it showed the influence of the river was the exact same footage as the majority of this property. So, you can only anticipate that this is going to be just a clean sweep down into the water, which is a dreadful mistake. The, as far as the signage went, the original time that this was brought before you, the signage was placed to notify the public down at the bottom of Thirty-Ninth Place, way at the end of the dead-end street, where no one could see it from the street as they passed on Jackson or any other side. I felt that that was trickery. If you had noticed at your literature you have at your desk tonight, you'll see on your cover sheet that no one made the motion. There is notification, or verbiage there that says who seconded it, that no one made a motion according to the documentation that you have. And I feel that that's subterfuge, I feel that there was a conflict of interest there with Ms. McLean, who made the motion, that she too should have abstained. As a pastor, she had the obligation to overbudgets in her church that contribute to the major property owner. It, and then, it was in the minutes, it said, if you'd read the minutes from the previous packet, it was right there in the minutes of everything that was going on. And again, it's a conflict of interest, and I appreciate Councilmember Roberson from abstaining on that. It's the pretense of looking at, from my side to yours, to see if there's anything that should not be. Lee Summit now has six hundred luxury apartments coming forward, and they will be at market rate, just as this one was judged by Mr. Moore. You can't tell me that they aren't going to move to Lee Summit as opposed to Independence. There was no tax abatement, there was no industrial bond used that will be coming forward with that project. So, that's going to leave us rent-heavy, as Councilmember Doorty had mentioned. The bottom line is that you're building a thirteen-point-five-three-acre development on wetlands, and this is only going to come back and haunt us in the future. Cindy McLean should have abstained. The staff created problems with subterfuge by not placing the signs. There weren't even signs out this weekend to notify the public that this was even on the agenda to speak on. And Lee Summit is building six hundred luxury apartments without a tax abatement or a city-backed bond, and Councilmember Roberson said it very succinctly, and I totally support you. We may and probably will need a bond to save IPL. And I truly agree with that, because that benefits all of the citizens of Independence, and applaud you for that forward-thinking.
One minute, Ms. Young.
I'm not Deborah, but you guys aren't Monty Hall either.
This takes us to Councilmember comments. I'll start on my right with Councilmember Doorty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got the Heritage Festival coming up this weekend, so I'll be at the new farmer's market. Come take a trip around the world and not have to get off Truman Road. I invite everybody to come out and have a good time.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Huff?
Nothing.
Councilmember DeLucie?
I wondered where we are on the rate study, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Burns and McDonald's representative that's doing that will be meeting with the Assistant City Manager and I later this week to kind of begin to review some of the preliminary findings of that, anticipate that will be to the council within the next thirty to forty-five days. I might go ahead and remark, if it's okay, one of the things I wanted to notify the council of, earlier this summer, the council, through Mayor Weir, had given direction to me to look at a possibility of a rate moratorium for Independence Power and Light. We have talked with our financial advisor at Springstead, who is doing a holistic assessment of the financials of Independence Power and Light, and in anticipation of this cost-of-service study that is forthcoming, they've advised that we hold off on that just a little while longer, in terms of the council taking any action. They're not saying that's, you know, weighing in on the wisdom, whether that's good or bad, but they're just saying, until we know more, that could signal to the credit agencies, some sort of signal that may not be appropriate till we have that information. So, we still don't know exactly where we're at with those, and as I said, we should have those soon, but I anticipate that we're going to have some information to the council within the next thirty to forty-five days that will help you all make some long-term decisions around the electric utility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Roberson?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to ask about, and perhaps ask the council to look at in the future, is Van Hook Park. I noticed the article in the Examiner a while back, and I've been concerned about Van Hook for some time, and I realize our hands have been somewhat tied because of the Department of Natural Resources, and some of the methane and contamination from the past dump that was there, a city dump. But it's been over twenty-five years, and I would like us to try to, either legislatively or through our folks that lobby for us in Jeff City, get some information from DNR, or at least through our state representatives and state senators, so that we can actually get more information. We've not been given anything since I've been on the council. I haven't received any information, except that we're not allowed to do anything, and that seems very strange, since they have told us we don't have to do anything as far as cleanup. So, I would like us to put it on our agenda, legislative agenda, to actually ask Jeff City where we are, and what the future holds for Van Hook Park. It has some ball fields, it has the soccer field with very limited use. I don't know if Mr. Urfer wants to comment. I think it's hardly ever used, perhaps by the soccer association once in a while for practice. practice. The access is very poor to begin with, and it hasn't been upgraded because we haven't been allowed to because of DNR. So, I'm just asking for the council's indulgence that we put that on our agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Van Camp?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In closing, I'd like to bring something, a personal note. I'd like to wish my wife, Marguerite, a happy 25th wedding anniversary. And I'd also like to thank her for her tireless assistance, her unfailing loyalty, and her tremendous support in my efforts to represent the citizens of Independence on the city council. Did I do well, dear? I too think that there is more to be done, especially with our capacity generation and purchasing at IPL. We had asked, me and Mr. Huff, Councilman Huff, to put this on a fast track. We have to start moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Few things. Mr. City Manager, thank you for giving us an update on the potential rate moratorium or lowering of our utility, our electric utility rate. In that request, we had also asked for a schedule for the master plan review, and I know you sent a memo to the council today, but if you would just share with the citizens what the process is on that.
Certainly. So, staff and I did a quick cursory glance at what industry best practices are around this. I'll remind the council, it was about 20 years since we last conducted an energy master plan. Looks like anywhere from five to seven years is industry best practice for frequency. My recommendation to the city council, if there's no objection, at your next meeting on November 5th, is to place a resolution before the council that would direct city staff to perform that particular activity on at least that frequent of a basis, if not more frequent based on the changes in the industry, but make it a requirement to do it within at least every five-year period.
Okay, thank you very much. There, Councilman Roberson, I did receive some context following the article that appeared in the Examiner regarding Van Hook Park, and I know it's not the first time that we've heard frustration, especially from the descendants of the Van Hook family about the condition of the park. I did reach out to the city manager's office, and the recommendation or the suggestion was that we just take, you know, do away with that park and rename another park, Van Hook Park, for the, you know, very significant contributions Van Hook family has made to the state of Independence and Parks and Recreation. I know Eric's not prepared to speak on this tonight, but I know that the information I received from the city manager's office was that steps were being taken, we would bring this forward to our Parks Commission for further consideration, for recommendations to the council of what action needs to be taken to make that park really worthy of being part of our system and certainly bearing the name of the Van Hook family. So, we will certainly proceed with that. One other announcement, the, there will be some budget engagement hearings, I guess we'll call them, presentations, taking place in the next couple of weeks. This is, as you are aware, the budget is developed throughout the year and presented to the council before July 1st or before June 30th for approval, but this is certainly a process that we don't take a rest from, and so, the city manager and his staff will be holding a couple of events. The first is tomorrow evening at the Independence Utilities Center at 6:00 PM. And this is really an opportunity to come and learn as citizens about the budgeting process and how priorities are set, and to give some information. And then the second one, Meg, help me out, when is it?
October 25th, at the Uptown Market.
October 25th, at the Uptown Market, again, at 6 o'clock. The council will be having our annual strategic planning session in November, so this is a good opportunity to share your thoughts about some, get a better understanding of how the budget is put together, and share some thoughts about some budget priorities for the upcoming year. Anything else this evening, Mr. City Manager?
Let me just quickly update the council that the resolution that you passed tonight regarding the shared services, I do want to thank you for your support on that. Your colleagues in Lee Summit and Blue Springs will be taking up that issue later this month, so I figured since this was my harebrained idea, we better start with it first and then roll from there. So, thank you.
Okay, we are going to be having an appeal hearing, so we will just take a couple minutes recess to prepare for that, and then we will adjourn for the appeals hearing.